Of the Library Board of Trustees, today, November the 9th. I will now proceed to item two on the agenda, the Pledge of Allegiance. Miguel, our Army veteran here, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our greetings to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Miguel, and thank you for your service to our country. We'll now proceed to item three on the agenda, the adoption of the agenda, Daniza. Is everything in order?
Yes, Chairman Verona, everything's in order.
So you recommend it?
I do.
Correct, okay. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda of November 9th as presented and recommended by Daniza.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Vanderwold.
Second.
Second by Marva, to approve the agenda as recommended by Daniza Lopez of Wednesday, November the 9th. Discussion? Objections? Motion carried. Any call to the public?
None at this time, Chairman.
We'll move on to discussion items. Number one, Sonoyta Building update, Juan Balderas. Mr. Balderas, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, just a quick update on where we stand with the bid. So we have a draft bid that's with legal at the moment. So once that gets approved by legal, I'll share it with Daniza and she could distribute that with the rest of the board. So we are making progress, not as fast as we would like. Legal has been kind of busy with elections at the moment, so as soon as they clear that up, they'll kind of get some of our other items. And then on the internet, we have pretty much everything in place. We're just still waiting on CenturyLink to actually bring in the fiber. There is a national shortage of some of the components that they need out there, to the point where even it's affecting their existing customers if, for break-fix type stuff, so they're kind of prioritizing equipment that kind of fails to replace that instead of new build. So we're still waiting on CenturyLink, but we're hopeful that soon they bring in the equipment that's needed there. So that was a brand-new build to bring in fiber, so that's why it's taking a little longer than expected. But we're hopeful that soon.
Juan, does the proposal for bids, does that basically cover the design that you shared with us?
Correct, yeah. Let me see if there's some drawings here. We may have included them in here. So yeah, it's for the demolition and remodel of specifically the library. And then we have a couple other phases to expand to where what I kind of call the shop was, to relocate like the sheriffs back there and some additional bathrooms that would be kind of placed in the shop area. Yeah, I don't have any drawings with me today, but...
But it follows basically the schematic?
Yeah, yeah. The library hasn't changed. That's still the main focus of the bid. So that's kind of the priority. And then depending on, I guess, funds, you know, there was an idea for like a visitor center, kind of build out a larger space that currently exists. Because right now it's kind of sectioned off. And there is a small space, what used to be, I guess, the courtroom there, that was originally kind of designated for the visitor center, but I think they want to kind of turn that, make that just a meeting room, and then have a visitor center kind of a few doors down from there. But yeah, the concept still remains the same.
Okay, Juanita.
Yes. Oh, I just have a question on the internet. Is that, and you're working with CenturyLink, is that the 5G fiber optic cable that's being, coming through? Or is that the, what they've had before, the same cable that's giving internet service to the commercial center?
Right, so there is fiber basically across the street. It was done through a different project. And it's more the equipment, like the routers, the Sienna boxes that they use to route their traffic back to their headquarters, basically. Where there's just a shortage of them at the moment. So we've explored the possibility of different equipment, but they have a preferred kind of vendor that they use, so that's kind of what they're trying to stick to.
So it's basically the current?
It's hardware, yeah, it's hardware. They would go inside the building. So I think, so the fiber, if you drive, I forget the name of that street, right in front of the library, you'll see a pole across the street and it'll be like an orange. And that's where the fiber currently sits. So once they have the equipment, it's pretty quick for them to bring it into the building.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Anna?
No questions.
Marva?
No questions.
Brian?
Nothing, sir.
Jerry?
Do you have any projected timeframe for when this will start? Or when, how long it will take to actually do, once you've got the approvals?
For the renovation? For the renovation?
Yeah.
I don't. So we'll, you know, I'll take it up to the point where we get the bids back. And then, at that point, you know, we'll bring in, you know, county manager and those folks to try to secure the funding, because I think there is some money that's been earmarked. But I don't have the exact numbers and how that's going to work, right? But I know that they're aware of it and it's a priority to them, so. But that would kind of fall. And I could try to get more information on that.
But there's no real question about the funds being available, correct?
I don't, that part I don't know. That part, I haven't gone that far. Yeah, I was kind of just tasked with kind of bringing proposals forward to them and then they'll kind of take it from there. Or, you know, if they say this is the amount of money, then we could continue on. But I could try to get some of that information for you as well.
Okay, anything else, Jerry?
No.
Juan, thank you very much. If you could please put down for our next meeting, which is on December the 14th, so that we can have you give us any updates that you have on the proposals and on the finances that Jerry brought up right now.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you, thank you, Juan. Item two, Main Library Exterior Painting Update, Daniza.
I am currently working with the facility supervisor, Carlos Millán, to get quotes for the outside paint. And I'm hoping to come back in December with more, with a more concrete, with quotes. So that's where we are right now.
Okay, Brian, this is your subject.
Thank you. No, I guess you got to start with quotes. Okay, thank you, that's fine.
Okay, Jerry?
No.
Marva?
No.
Anna?
No.
Juanita?
No.
Okay, so we're pretty much set with that. Keep that on the agenda for next month, so we can stay current with that one, okay? Item three, Centennial Celebration. We're going to start with the banners, Marva, because we have Miguel Melendez, the IT guy, and I don't want to hold him up too much here. So you could, let's start with you, Marva.
I think most of us already saw the banner on the right is a possible, when we vote on which one to have printed and done. And I would do Spanish on the other side, so it would be Spanish on one side, English on the other.
Okay.
And then, we never decided on the locations, but I think Daniza was going to check that out, if we have permission to use anything farther north.
It's where the city goes to, I didn't hear back from ADOT or Public Works on that. So it's usually where the city banners go, that's where we could have them.
Okay, well, then we'll decide on how many, when the time comes, after Luis shares his ideas.
Okay.
Luis has. And the other picture on the screen is part of the pamphlet that Friends is going to hand out. I had an idea that I think it would be a good idea to give all the teachers in the districts and in Rio Rico one a piece, so that they can share that information. And possibly accompany a letter about how fun a field trip can be to the library.
True.
They need to be reminded of that, along with the pamphlet. And Miguel, I couldn't get it to move over and see the front of the pamphlet. The left is the inside and it has just a whole bunch of images of things that go on in the library. In the middle, I can't see it from here, but the other, yeah, the other image, the other side, there's a third image up there that I couldn't, I couldn't move the banner over to bring up the other image. Is it behind there? But it's the front of the pamphlet. That's the inside that tells about the women's club creating the library.
That's the inside?
Uh huh. That's the outside there.
That's the outside.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And on the left, on the left are the branches with the address, the phone numbers, and the city and the county emblems at the bottom. On the right is happy birthday. And in the middle is the history of the locations of the library.
I like that you put those two emblems up there. And I love the colors, Marva.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing, Miguel, can you put up the banner again, the one that was on the far right? Yeah, the only thing is, on the banner, I love the colors and everything, but right below the...
Yep, I'm going to change it.
Yeah.
The font needs to change.
Yes, the font, that's a good, I just, I don't think as a banner, it will...
I like the hundred, but then it says reasons to celebrate. And the S's are, you can't read it.
Okay.
And so I was going to change that font. And the one at the bottom is the same font. It says anniversary, but you want to change that one or leave it? I think it's okay. But reasons to celebrate, you just can't read it.
There's also, when we agree that you might look at, Marva, for the banners, over there at Pearson Field, there's a fence there facing the street that, maybe Daniza can start asking the school for permission to hang a big banner right there for a couple of months, right there? Or we can put it up on the wall there, on the old high school building itself, because a lot of people pass through there. Think that would be an ideal place to place that banner, right there.
So Daniza can check that out? Would we use the same banner, the same banner?
Well, I would think that you would have to design a different banner for that one. More, this one's more vertical to hang someplace.
Yes.
This one would have to be a little bit more horizontal and bigger.
And does Daniza have money in the...
Yeah, she's okay with the money.
We've got money?
Yeah, we're okay with it, we're okay with the money, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we need the...
Friends is going to pay for the pamphlet.
Okay.
Marsha, can I ask a question?
Yeah, hold on. I know what Friends is trying to do, and I know you're always getting books and everything. So why don't we do this, Marva, if it's okay with everybody here? I would prefer, Daniza, that, Marva, give you what it's going to cost for the brochures and banners? And let's see how that fits into our budget. And let's take everything that we can from there. So we can preserve that in case we have something else that Daniza or Denise needs something at the library, that you can help them with that.
I appreciate that.
I would prefer that we do what we can with this money that we've got from the county and the city this year and next year. And then save that money, because sometimes you have youth activities that they need help with.
And they've spent a good bit recently, yeah.
Right, so let's save that for that and let's spend this one. Okay, now, Anna.
Appreciate that.
So, back to the banners and at Pearson High School. Well, it's my neighborhood, I walk by there all the time. And, oops, I'm sorry. So the banners, the banners, and I, you know, yes, you'd have to change the shape of that banner. However, I'm just thinking, like, where Pearson High School has their marquee and things like this? If there is someplace that it could really be hung that way, so that, you know, people...
The only place that you can hang those, and maybe you and Marva can go look at that, is on the light poles that go around the track there. That's the only place that I can see that you could hang them there.
At Pearson, yeah.
If you want to stay with that model, that's, maybe you could hang two or three and people will notice it as they're passing by. The only thing is, for visi, they might notice it, but for visibility to read it, I still think the fence would be appropriate.
Has to be passed by?
Right, as they're passing by there, something big like that.
I agree.
And you could, whoever's going to make the banners, you can tell, hey, why don't you go measure something and add that to the cost, so we can get that in there. And then put the rest banners like that to go through town. And I was telling also, Daniza, it would be nice if you could order some bumper stickers so that we, like, how the banner is, so we can put it on our cars for the year though, too. On everybody to share like that around.
Okay, bumper sticker.
Anything else that you have? Anybody, anybody here have any comments on the banner? Brian?
Couple of questions.
Sure.
Are the banners you're proposing, are they canvas or vinyl?
I think vinyl. Vinyl was actually a cheaper quote, yes.
And the quantity?
We don't know yet. We were talking about possibly ten banners, like downtown, wherever we can find the proper light pole to hang it on. I wanted some more coming up north, but those poles are really high. And we're not sure the city or county will allow us to hang them, right, Daniza? Is it the city or county you need?
It's the city.
City.
The city.
But I'm sure that the city will, wherever they hang, I think the only problem that I can see right now with the banners on the poles is that they use them for Memorial Day that's coming up, to put the American flag, Memorial Day and the Fourth of July, okay?
We would probably put them up when they take down the Christmas banners.
Okay, but how long we would want?
January to April, if they'll let us.
Oh, yeah, January, yeah, that's, well, we could probably take it all the way till May though, too. And that. Denise?
Are you going to put any banners in Rio Rico, Sonoyta, and Toubac, or just Nogales?
I would like to.
Yeah?
It'd be, it'd be really good to put one, and one in Toubac.
Yep.
Because I know the plaza where Garrett's has a light post and you can put those type of banners up there, in the plaza.
We need to get together, when we decide the banner that we are going to print and make, then we need to decide what locations and how many, at that point. But we decided we didn't want to do too many, because after the event, it's a problem. If we can find places that will give a home to the banner after the centennial, that'd be good, too.
Yeah, we have...
Instead of throwing them away.
Right, we have some light poles where the community college is at, that we hang some University of Arizona banners and Pima Community College banners. We can take those down and put these banners up there though, too.
At the community college?
At the community college on there. And I can have Mr. Panosopoulos bring his people to put the banners up.
Okay.
You just got to make sure that on the top of it...
So there'd be two places there?
Yeah, there's two places.
So that would be two?
Uh huh, and if you have a big banner, we can put it on the window there at the college though, too. But just make sure, Marva, that the top of the banner and the bottom of the banner...
Have grommets.
Yeah, so they can put it into the pole right there, the little steel thing, so they connect right there.
That's a grommet, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Brian?
No, but I just wanted to comment, I'm very, very impressed with Marva's dedication to these projects.
Yes.
She is the one person in this room that has accomplished anything. And I'm really, really appreciative.
Thank you.
She's done a wonderful job.
Okay.
But I want to ask some of you right now, when we go through this discussion, that some of you have to take, we have to take more responsibility, especially when we start talking about the reception and everything. We can't be doing this just as a whole board. Somebody is going to have to step up here to take, you know, be the lead person for this. Like you were in this, Marva, then coming back, and then, we pitch in to help you like that. So when we get to that, I want to talk about that.
And once December gets here, everything's crazy. That's why I really would like to have this resolved before December. Because then January comes and December is an impossible time, too, for me, anyway.
Well, I think most of it is said. You just need to get together with the locations. I suggested some locations. I can help you with getting...
And make sure we have permission
Yes, uh huh.
For those locations, and then we'll say, we'll define a
Yeah, the cities.
A number of banners.
Right, so Denise, would you work with Marva on that? Daniza and Denise, the both of you work with her on that, to get that taken care of. So you can come back with a report. And then at that time, Luis can chime in though, too.
Okay.
And we can get it done.
And we can decide on the number of pamphlets also, out of this meeting time, right? We can decide on that.
Well, I think the pamphlets, they shouldn't...
We want so many for each branch, but then I would like to take some to the schools.
Right, so I think if we're going to spend, we should at least get 5,000.
I don't know, we were talking about three or 400.
Oh, no, 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 three or 400 I'm going to do.
The pamphlets?
Yeah, the pamphlets. Get enough pamphlets so they can last for the whole year. The pamphlets, it's 100 years, it's going to be out there for 12 months. You can set some out here in front of the city hall, you can set some at the college, you could... There's a lot of places where we can, you set them at the Chamber of Commerce. There's a lot of Chamber of Commerces where you can set them around there. I mean, if we're going to spend it for purchasing, you might as well get enough that's going to hold us. And I think 5,000 is a good amount right there, that you can look in to get it.
Daniza has a comment.
I do just want to chime in, that I am able to email the pamphlets to the school through Alfredo, through Chris Young, the Deputy Superintendent. And they are able to print at the different schools, too. So there's that, too.
Yeah, but the thing is, we don't want them to print, because we don't know if they're going to print. We would rather have you take them away, here's a hundred, place them out over there. We should do the job, not depend upon somebody else to do that. What we're responsible for, okay?
And we were going to decide by the number of people that come and go in the library to give each branch, I don't know, I think a hundred or so, but...
Yeah, we'll give them more than enough, so everybody has enough for the whole full year.
Okay.
For the community.
Yeah, for the community, you never know. Because if we run out of...
We'll see how much money we have.
We'll be okay.
And the visitor center, you know, people visiting, you could encourage?
What visitor center?
You're going to get a...
You have a visitor center of ours?
Yeah.
Don't depend upon other people.
Yeah, Chamber of Commerce.
It looks good.
Because then they push it aside and then they forget. Okay.
Okay.
We talked, anybody going to talk, we talked about the pamphlets already, right?
Yes.
Okay, I want to, before, I want to move over here to the reception. The reception, we've got it scheduled for January. I don't think we're going to be able to make it for January. Because we were, we still need to invite some people. We had talked about the poet, Alberto Rios, and Anna, you talked about inviting people. I just don't think that we'll be able to do it by January. So we're probably looking right now at February, we're looking at some dates. Now, I'm willing to help, you know, when you, and all of that, whatever you need. But I need one of you here to step up, to be, to oversee this and be the driver behind this, organize it, report it back to the, like, exactly what Marva's doing. So, do we have any volunteers, or do you want me to nominate somebody? Okay. Brian, you started with this thing. I need you to, the board needs you to go ahead and start organizing the reception, who we're going to have as speakers, the invitation, when we're going to have it, how we're going to do it. So we get somebody to start reporting back, so we can at least set, because it's not going to happen for January. This gives us enough time to do some publicity. Denise and Daniza can help us with the Nogales International. They're getting very good at putting out their press releases and everything. Now I've noticed, they're getting some expertise in that area, so, Brian, I hope you'll...
Thank you, Mr. Verona, but no thank you. I'm unable to do it.
Is there anybody else who can step up?
With help?
I'll help you, yeah, no. We all help you in all of that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't even have parties in my own home. But I will, this is a big...
Well, why don't we do this, Anna? Why don't you and I meet and you and I will co-chair it?
Okay.
How's that sound? All right? Okay, and we'll be three co-chairs, Daniza, me, and Anna, okay?
Where's the location? That is at the library?
We're going to do it at the library, right, Denise? That's what we agreed upon.
That's number one, decided.
That's decided, it's going to be at the library, right there. We just got to figure out on the time and the event and what we're going to have and every, right?
Okay.
Okay, all righty.
Has anything been done on the invitations?
Nothing.
They still need to be...
There still needs to be designed and everything.
Oh, that'd be right, that's good.
Maybe you can come up with some ideas for that, Marva, the invitations. Okay? It's got to be kind of well-done and everything. All right, got that, Delsey. Ed's not here. Juanita, you have something here?
Yes, I would like to talk about the book giveaways.
Okay.
I was funding the book giveaways. I would like to, you know, if we could, actually purchase the books from authors directly, which might be less expensive, or online. And I was thinking, and, you know, I don't think we voted on this, but the Friends were interested in helping sponsor this. We would have like four books, January, February, March, April, four book giveaways, children's books and adult books. So that's like 32 books that we would make available. Each month would be a different book. The patrons, people come to the library, would leave their name in a fishbowl or whatever and be drawn at the end of the month, and we would give away one adult and one children's book. So I'm responsible for getting all these books. And I wondered what the budget is like. Is it possible that the Centennial budget would cover at that expense? I will be donating four books and then...
I think...
You think so? Oh, that would be wonderful.
Why don't you work, Juanita, why don't you work with Daniza?
Absolutely.
Okay, and she'll take care of it. Daniza, okay?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, we got that settled up. The only thing, Marva?
I know that Alfredo Velazquez has a budget for the library, from the grant, right, Daniza? And I thought we were going to use some of that money to order some books for that book giveaway.
I know the grant is allocated specifically for books that are going to be catalogued in the branches and on the mobile library. So that's where that money is for.
So we can't use any of it for a book giveaway?
Not for, no, not for giveaways.
Okay.
But I will ask if he is willing to help us out with the centennial. I'll find out. I'll ask him.
Maybe you can get him like, you were saying the the pamphlets, maybe you can tell him, hey, we're going to get 5,000 pamphlets. Can you help us with the pamphlets? All right. Okay, anybody have anything else on those?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
So I'm purchasing books right now through Alfredo's budget, and it's for training. But I found some publishing houses that, you know, will give you like a 60% discount or something like this. So we could look at those sites to be able to see if, and decide on which books. But I'll talk about that, where the books save lives.
Okay.
Are you talking about the book giveaway? Okay, we, yeah, I had, was thinking in terms of local authors, and they may be...
Yeah, I'll talk about that one, okay. I'm coming up right now.
Go ahead, start in with the local authors.
Okay, so I have, I have found an interesting combination of authors that we have in the community living and not living. Some of them have published books, some are self-published books, some are unpublished, that they have, you know, printed themselves. And then, you know, I keep expanding, Paul Hathaway, Ronnie Capen, Alberto Rios, Ivan Ruzhlauski, who writes bilingual poetry, Maritza Lynn, who just published her, let's see, her Fruits and Vegetables, which is a little bilingual book. And then Governor Raúl Castro had a book, Adversity is My Friend. And, I mean, he's a, I would consider him local, because, you know, this is where he finished his life. And his book is excellent and relevant to our community. So as I go expanding, and then... So as I go expanding and then, I think I have a question about our authors. Do we want our authors that are writing about the relevancy of our area or any author? Because throughout the county, we have different authors that we're not familiar with, but have published books. Juanita?
Yeah, I think authors in general. I don't think any. Yeah.
Okay. And I met a Korean woman that wrote a Korean English bilingual book. And I met her at the festival, at the courthouse, Alfredo's Art Festival. And I have her information here. She and her husband are authors. And so, so I mean, the more I get out there, the more authors that I run into. So maybe on the part of the authors that are local within our county, even if they've passed, maybe having their, their books out there, you know, so that people can experience, you know, what they've written. So yes, I'm.
Are you talking about a display at each library with their books?
No, I'm talking about the, at the reception.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we're.
You're inviting those invited.
Yeah. We're inviting the local authors and, and as I say, the pool keeps growing. But my question is, the local authors that have passed, can we at the reception have their books out there?
And I think Governor Castro's book is excellent.
Yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Anna, could you also look to see with Daniza about sending a letter to Alberto Rios to come down and be the guest speaker for the reception? See what day he could come down in February and we can work around his.
Oh, okay.
Would, because I think he'd be the perfect guest speaker.
I invited him last time.
Did you?
Yeah, for our last centennial. And he came down and spoke to us.
Well, maybe Juanita can help you make contact with him. She's made contact with. Maybe the two of you can work on that with Daniza, okay?
But we're actually looking, working with his books in our Book Save Lives project.
Is there more?
All of his books.
All of his books.
Uh huh. And introducing them to the community within our training. And so it's really exciting and meaningful for the people that we're training to know that there are so many authors that are out here and from here and talking about their experience, you know, their binational experiences. Yes, okay, if you would give me that.
Okay. And then you can report on that. Daniza put that down so that I report on that. Okay, Anna, anything else?
No.
Anybody have anything else? Okay, let's move on to item four, Book Save Lives. Anna?
Okay, so we are in our, we finished our third week of training. We had to move out of the library because we didn't fit. And that's, you know, that is really exciting. So we moved on to the Americana. They lent us one of their conference rooms. And that's where the last two sessions, we brought out books. And we have the local authors as many as we can, books that we can find from local authors and people, authors from the borders, all borders, even, I mean, and so, so the people that are being trained have made these comments of how they're taking this training back into their schools and into the homes for the preschool children. And everybody's really excited about the training itself. This last time, we had a seventh grade girl who had never read a book on her own. And Daphne Russell, who's doing the training, worked with her. We kind of scrapped the whole agenda and it worked with her to, to show her technique on how to get kids reading. And her premises, if you can get them to read three books independently, they will become readers. And we actually talked about the teen space at the library to make it available to them and also to the participants who are learning this technique so that they can work with students at the teen space. Now, because it's a common space, it's an open space, there are a lot of people there. And so, so everybody's getting really excited. We have one more of these trainings in this group. And then we're going to retrain people and send the information out to the different superintendents and schools to try to get 50 other people in the community, in the schools, and to participate. The goal is to get people reading. And I think, you know, we've started off really well. The other thing is, is that we're working on the Santa Cruz or the mobile library. And we have local people in the community that are creating the murals on the outside. And the mural, I think it's wonderful. There's, you know, one of the, one of the murals on it will be, of course, the main library. And another one's going to be the Tubac Library with the, with the Hevelina, even though they're not there anymore because, but they were just amazing. And then different parts of the county. And we've been negotiating, so we're not sure which ones are gonna end up on there. So the outside, we are planning, will be ready for the Christmas light parade. But we're, you know, but they're, they're actually, and it's all, a lot of firefighters are working on it. So, so we have a lot of people working on the inside and the outside. It'll be at the Christmas light parade. We're actually gonna march behind the parade. Some people dressed as characters from, you know, children's books. And others will have a Book Save Live t-shirt on. And so we're really excited to get the community to see the mobile library. And, and then, you know, how to use it, what, you know, what they're doing. And I know that Maritza Lynn, who's in charge of the mobile library and Daniza are working closely again with those, the funding in the grant itself to get the books into the, to the mobile library. And not just books, but the technology that is going to be needed, you know, in the community. And the adults that have known about it are really excited and have asked questions and looking forward to a schedule so that we'll be in certain places at certain times and they can expect to return their books or check out books. And it's for birth to high school is where we're pushing the books and the training. And we're trying to make sure that whoever's driving, it could be me, it could be anybody, it could be Daniza, you know, driving the mobile library to these spots. We want them to come out of this training so that they can be supportive, you know, of people that, you know, to get our kids to read and get our parents to read to their kids. So a lot of good things are happening through Alfredo's grant there.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Before I forget, also Denise, would you come up at the next meeting when we talk about the centennial celebration? I'd like for you to overlook the decor inside there when we have the reception in there. Bring some historical deals from the, that you can get over there from the Primadilla Alta Historical Society about the library and bring them in and all of that. Could you take charge of that? Okay. And the decor, you might, Daniza, you might have to give her some money there, allocate some on the budget to get some decor for that night. Okay? Or that evening. Okay, let's move on to item five, Library Friends Update. Marva?
I think we pretty much covered it with the banner and the pamphlet.
Okay.
There's one other thing. We've been discussing little free libraries and we have permission to put one at Garrett's and Safeway. But I wanted to ask, Daniza, you mentioned in an email about graffiti on the library and some books being damaged. What books were those?
The book, the sculpture, well, the books.
Oh, the sculpture.
Uh huh, that was yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, and the side wall.
I'm kind of concerned about, you know, putting out the little free libraries. We hope nobody would, you know, try to destroy them. But Anna has one that she's working on to put downtown. And then we have Anthony Sedgwick, young Anthony Sedgwick is going to build us several little free libraries. And, and we'll be able to take books out of the Tubac storage to put in there, in those. And hopefully we'll have them January, February, when we start the centennial celebration.
You know what? That thought, I don't know if they're gonna do it this year, but the city for the holidays, they always make these little houses for Karen Park. If they're gonna do that, are they? Have you been, okay, if they're gonna do that, maybe we can, you can start working on that. All of us pitch in decorating that, that house that they're gonna get a house for us so we can start making it the 100 year library.
Are they gonna get one for us?
Yeah, Denise, do you know the update on that?
That's cool.
Judy will help us to get it. Then we can, and a lot of people go there to see those houses and we can decorate it and everything with a, with a 100 year celebration and all of that.
And have it there for Christmas. That's.
Yeah.
That'd be a nice introduction.
Okay.
That's great.
Okay. I think that'll be real nice. So you guys can coordinate that and we'll pitch in whatever you need. Okay. That's, okay, thank you, Marva. Item six, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve the Minutes of October 12, 2022 Meeting. Marva?
I move that we accept the minutes on one condition. We have three corrections that need to be made to the table of attendance. And we had difficulty making those changes. So Judith is gonna work on figuring out the glitch on that. But we'll remove Nan and Veronica from, from the attendance. And we'll change that I was present at that last meeting.
Oh, yeah.
But everything else, we've already made corrections to the rest of the minutes and they're acceptable. So I move that we accept them with those changes.
Okay. I was there, but maybe I wasn't official.
Not yet. Oh, that's the other change I told.
The other change is to add Anna Don.
Yeah, she was official at that.
Yeah.
Because the city had already voted on you, right?
Yes. Yeah, she was official.
So there's four changes. But they're all to that attendance table there.
Sure.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Nan. Is there a second? Marva?
Yes, I second with the changes.
Juanita seconded with the changes. Discussion? Objections? Motion carried. Okay, now move on to item six, Board Reports. Current events summaries must be brief and there cannot be any proposal, discussion, deliberation or legal action taken. Jerry?
Nothing at this time.
Brian?
I have a question to Daniza. I believe that Nan was gonna be at this meeting in November to discuss her journalist project with the Nogales International.
She sent me an email she was not able to attend today's meeting. She will be here in December.
All right.
But in fairness though, Daniza, there's a health issue there with her husband, okay? So that's why. She wants to come, but he's got a serious health issue there. Okay. Marva?
No.
Anna?
I just wanted to add that, that, you know, places to do the pamphlets was like La Linea downtown. And then Sarah Noon, I can't remember her married name. She's starting an art center next to La Chiquita Bar. Then the old courthouse has a lot of Alfredo Velazquez personnel there. And they're doing a lot of outreach in the community. And then the Primadilla Alta. So I'm excited, you know, that.
You brought that up about the brochures. They will come in handy.
Okay, Marva, that's another place that.
I'll get this for Marva.
Yeah, because. The 1904 courthouse is perfect to put a banner up there in the front. Okay, anything else, Anna?
The other thing, because I never know when I'm supposed to talk and not talk. I told you that, Marcelline. But when we're talking about the reception, it would be really nice if we could have or find pictures of former librarians. Because I know people keep asking me, you know, like who is, who is this librarian?
Maybe you can work, Denise is gonna be responsible for that of going to the Primadilla Alta Historical Society and look for some of the, and if Marva has some. Anything else, Anna?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Veronica, Juanita?
Yeah, just two things. The banners, I think would be wonderful that they were at the branches as well and have a banner. And a thought would be, I mean, you suggested, what was it, the college? Yeah, you could keep them up for quite a while in the library. I was in a couple of libraries where I was traveling and they had, it had been there for 10 years, their 100 year celebration, but it's kind of a nice reminder. So, you know, don't take them down immediately. I realize outside you might have to and, you know, in the city, obviously you probably have to take them down, but keep them up.
We can probably find some places that they could sit.
And then I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to say there was a, an event at the Sonido for children, at the Sonido Library. Lynette, a clerk there, had a contest, a pumpkin painting contest. And it was attended, I believe, 28 or 29 children and of all ages, mainly young. And it was really a wonderful opportunity and it shows what we can do when we have space and some energetic clerks who are really willing to help out.
Anything else, Juanita? Anything else? Juanita?
No.
Okay. The only thing I have to report is that I did attend, along with Brian, the library Halloween party. And it was very nice, very exciting. I got to meet Brian's granddaughter, who was very dressed up there. And I don't know who was having more, more of a fun time, the granddaughter or Brian. But it was very nice, the food, the treats, it was very well organized. All the kids, the little kids were properly supervised, make sure, ensure they were safe. I think the only suggestion that I would have that I think is, could lead to a tragedy if we're not careful of, I would, when you're having activities there in front, I would shut off the parking lot early in the day and just tell them, you go park in the back, but leave that open. Because I didn't feel comfortable with some people, the way they were driving in and out of there. And, you know, the little kids, they go and I think it's better, just shut it off and you park in the back. That's it.
We had to be parked one of the cars.
Like that?
We blocked the actual entrance, it's one of the cars, but the people were coming in through the exit.
The exit, yeah.
So we had to put chairs on the exit to close down the whole parking space.
Daniza, Denise, if you get together with the Public Works Department and the Police Department, they'll give you the barricades to put there that aren't removed. And it'll say police on them so they won't be removed, okay? But it was a good job. You guys did a very good job and I really enjoyed that. Okay, that's it. Let's move on to item seven, Library Directors Report. Current and upcoming events at the City County Libraries. Daniza?
I'll have Denise talk about the October events and then I'll move on to the November. And then I'll move on and talk about the November activities.
Okay, Denise?
So October was a really busy month for the library, for all of the libraries. Down in the Nogales Library, we had a teen horror drawing contest. We had four participants. We had the pumpkin painting, which was a success. We had like about, I would say 50 kids show up for the pumpkin painting. And then we had the big Halloween party, the library staff. We did 100 plus candy bags for the children. They were all given out. We had happy meals provided for them, pizza, treats. And at the Rio Rico Library, they also had an activity. They had the Coco Night, which they played the movie. And then they did guitars with cardboard, cardboard. And then while at Sonido, they had the first pumpkin painting event, which was a success. I was like, I don't know where they're getting kids from because back then we wouldn't have kids. Everything we would send over there, they would send it back because they're like, we don't have kids, we don't have kids. And now there's a lot of children showing up. So we had a really busy month this. And I want to think of the friends who are helping us with the money for the Halloween party. It really helped us out to buy the candy and paints and everything that we bought. That's it.
Okay. Denise?
For November, in Rio Rico and Nogales, we have our tech classes going on. Yesterday, we had one tech class at the Nogales Library. We had five adults. Luis was, Luis took care of it and he was just showing people how to do a basic search, how to do the Google search, how to use their phones. So that went well. November 16th, it's gonna be at the Rio Rico Library at 11:30. Also, on November. Also, on November sixteenth at the library, it's gonna be Teen Board Game Day. And we've ordered Scrabble, Monopoly, different board games. And that's the article that came out in the newspaper. That's gonna be at the teen space. We're also gonna be having at the teen space on November thirtieth, Color Your Own Book Cover. So books that have been discarded are gonna be given new book covers and the teens are gonna be able to take those books home with them. That's another one. On November thirtieth, also at the Rio Rico Library, they're gonna be getting their community together to talk about their Centennial celebration and how they want to celebrate. So we're gonna be getting some good ideas from Rio Rico. Tubac is also working on a Thanksgiving craft. They're gonna be doing something for the kids. And I know Sonoyta is also doing something for Thanksgiving. So that's November. That's it. Any questions?
Any questions coming, Marva?
Do we have those dates and information in our packet?
If they're not in your packet, they're also on Facebook and I will email you the information as well.
Thank you.
Anna?
So on the board games, the teen board games, do you need chaperones? I love board games.
Yeah, that would be great. If you want to be a chaperone, we're gonna have snacks. That way the teens can come and be like, there's free snacks. That's a, that's how we're gonna get them in there. So, yeah, more than welcome.
So November, we all know it's Veterans Day. We are honoring our veterans down at the library. We have a display for them and we have little stars. So if any of you have any veterans in your family, friends, you can email us the name of that person you would like up in the, in the display. And we'll go ahead and add it and I'm gonna add Miguel to the. Oh, and Sonoyta has a wall also for veterans. So you can send us the name through the, to our email and we'll go ahead and put them up.
It would be nice, like, there's a lot of veterans that are employees of the city of Nogales. Mention them and put them up on there.
Yeah, we've been, we have our stars for the public just to go and put out their name and then we glue them to the display. We have books about veterans and then we have flags and it's, it's a really neat display.
Well, let's get Miguel's.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that as soon as I get to the library.
Okay, thank you. Because what's his name, Frank Lopez is also, he served in the Marines and the Army.
My son too?
Yes.
Your son? Would you tell him, email?
I'm gonna text him right now.
Okay.
We're, we're putting names down at the Nogales Library, but Sonoyta has the actual pictures. I know we did them like this here because there's so many people that don't want their pictures exposed to the public. But if you want to send a picture, go ahead and send it to Sonoyta and they'll go ahead and put the picture.
Have you concluded with your?
I have concluded.
Anything else, questions, comments, or concerns? Brian?
Yes, I've stopped in, I'm curious about the, about Daniza's evaluation of the Rio Rico Library being open on Saturdays. Because I've stopped in a couple of times myself in the past month just to chat with the librarian and get an impression of how much it's being used. This is all brand new and small steps, right? But some Saturdays, there might have been two patrons. And other Saturdays, there might have been twelve. And so there's a variation, nothing consistent. And some people come to pick up books that they've ordered and the books have arrived, ILL. And other times, there might be a student studying. So other than that, Denise, do you have any observations?
Yeah, just like you were saying, sometimes there's been two. I've also been talking to Victor about it. Sometimes there's been more. And also, right now, I know it's gonna be going down because of the holidays and because of breaks. And it's been on and off, but there's people in the library. So that's, that's a big thing. So it's a change that's gonna take some time getting used to, but I think we're on the right track. We're gonna, we're gonna get there. We're gonna get, we're gonna make it a.
Anything else, Brian?
No, thanks.
Okay, let's move on to item eight, Future Agenda Items. We, next meeting, we're gonna be talking about the children's presentation, the teen presentation, and the Tubac presentation, correct?
Correct.
All right, Jerry, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Brian?
Yes. With the resignation of Veronica Sines, we have a vacancy on the board.
Yes, we do.
And I would suggest that all of us give thought, maybe over the next month, if we have any suggestions of who might we recommend to replace Ms. Sines.
That's in the Rio Rico area.
It would be a county rep, it could be anywhere, yeah. She did come from Rio Rico, yes.
Yeah, she did, okay.
She was a county rep.
Oh, I thought it was from Rio Rico since she was.
Not necessarily.
So it's a county rep, anyplace, okay.
So something to give some thought to.
That's a good point. So if you think of somebody that can devote time and everything, pass it on to Daniza, she can follow up. I know that she has followed up with one in particular individual, but he doesn't have time because of his business, so. Okay. Marva? Anna? Juanita?
Didn't we say that Nan was going to be coming and giving?
Yes.
That's in the agenda?
Yes.
If you can, and the paint, were you gonna have updates on the paint?
That'll be back on there too. Nothing else? Okay. Our next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December the fourteenth, at ten thirty here. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at eleven twenty-seven.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Motion by Juanita, seconded by Anna, that we adjourn this meeting at eleven twenty-seven. Discussion? Objections? The meeting is now adjourned.